Can you hear me Jackie?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Hi Jennifer.
Evening.
Good evening everyone, the time is now 6:30 and we'll get started our Sunny Side City Council regular meeting for Monday, September 27. And today's meeting is being held via our Zoom application. This meeting will be live streamed using Zoom, please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call on every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to ask any questions. I will now ask our city clerk Ranhel to go ahead and start the roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Burisma. Councillor Farmer.
Here.
Councillor Dieler.
Here.
Councillor Stucci.
Here.
Councillor Hicks. I'm sorry, Councillor Hicks.
He might be short of a little bit length, so we'll just hold off on him for a little bit. Jennifer.
Okay, okay, same with Deputy Mayor Burisma, right?
I have not heard anything from him, so I'll keep it on my list in case he shows up a little bit later, we'll just make an announcement.
Okay, sounds good. Councillor Hart.
Here.
Intern City Manager Alba.
Here.
City Clerk Venteria. City Clerk Venteria. Intern Finance and Admin Service Director.
Here, here.
Fire Chief Anderson. Jennifer, can you mute Brandy? Yeah, I'm trying to see who, hold on, give me one second. Who was it Jackie, I'm sorry? You can hit a button that says mute all. Okay, but it was Brandy. Okay, I think that worked, let me see. So I'll continue, Police Chief Escalera.
I'm here.
And just to make sure I didn't skip Fire Chief Anderson.
I'm here.
Okay, and I'll check off present City Clerk Venteria, and then Public Works Director Fisher.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and Deputy City Clerk Rangel, I'm here.
All right, we do have a quorum, so we're gonna move forward with our agenda for today. First up, we're gonna have our proclamation, we have two of them today. The first one's gonna be Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Okay, whereas everywhere you look this month, you will see shades of pink highlighting National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. A time to set aside each year to review and acknowledge of the disease. Shine a spotlight on the risk and symptoms and raise awareness of how we can help fight it. And whereas research efforts have yielded great progress in how we diagnose and treat breast cancer. And has shown that when breast cancer detected early, there is a higher rate of cure and better chance of success. Successful treatment and survival. This screening test for breast cancer is a mammogram. And whereas individuals and communities still benefit from a reminder that breast cancer is not a solved problem. Nor cured or conditioned to ignore. And whereas the fight does not end on October 31st. Taking the right steps to combat this disease includes screening tests for early detection and prevention. Standing by survivors and their families and supporting all the organizations that provide quality treatment and care. Or those who are working tirelessly to find a cure. Now therefore, I Francisco Guerrero, Mayor of the City of Sunny Side, Washington. By virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington. And on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In the City of Sunny Side and encourage all residents to think pink, think prevention, and think early detection. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to send my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sunny Side. To be affixed, done at the City of Sunny Side this 27th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021. The second proclamation that we have is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas City of Sunny Side is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city. And whereas fires are serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019. According to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can. Alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying or reported home fires in half. And whereas Sunset residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarm and knows how to respond. And whereas Sunset residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Sunset residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members. Including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Sunset first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Sunset residents who are responsive to public education measures. Are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas in 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, learning the sounds of fire safety. Effectively serves as, serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, I Francisco Guerrero, as Mayor of Sunny Side, Washington. Do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021 as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. Urge all people of Sunny Side to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week 2021. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Sunny Side's Fire and Emergency Services. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to send my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sunny Side to be affixed. Done at the City of Sunset this 27th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021. All right, two proclamations, move on to our Miss Sunny Side incoming and outgoing court. 2019, 2021 Miss Sunny Side Court have as a list as Queen Abigail Marquez. Princess Mackenzie Evans and Cadence Porter. Staff will be mailing, staff will be mailing the Miss Sunset community a mayor's coin for each of you to thank you for your representing Sunny Side in the first court to serve two consecutive years during a pandemic. Thank you very much ladies, I know we have a pretty big group tonight, so hopefully you're all in attendance and are able to receive this mayor's coin in the mail and I really appreciate all the hard work you ladies have done the past couple of years. And appreciate everything you're doing to represent our community. And I'm sure that our council members will echo that sentiment, so I want to thank you from the bottom of our heart and our city thanks to you for your commitment to the past couple of years. Up next, we have our 2021 Miss Sunny Side Court. Queen Alex Zyski, Princess Maria Herrera, Maura Roberts, and Adelina Valencia. Again, staff will mail the Miss Sunset Committee's Sunset pin for each of you. We know you were representing Sunny Side well, and congratulations on your success for the Sunny Side Court. Again, we thank you for your commitment and the time you're gonna be spending on different passions than your community projects. And I know it's gonna be a great year, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you guys. Once your term is over, so we can hear everyone, their success and their projects and how those went. The outgoing court, is there someone who wants to speak to council as far as their accomplishments for the past couple of years? And see if there's anyone, council member who wants to ask any questions or give you congratulatory accolades for your time of the past couple of years. Is Queen Abigail or one of the princesses available for the 2019, 2021 Miss Sunny Side Court that would like to speak today? You don't have to, but you have the option.
Hi, I am Abigail Marquez, I was the former Miss Sunny Side of 2019 to 2021. Not anymore, I'm a husband now, but I just wanted to say by being a part of the Miss Sunny Side program. I learned through many experiences how to be a leader. I got to grow my speaking skills and how to present myself to other. And I got to interact and understand my community more. Even though having this pandemic happening during my reign. I learned how to have hope and to enjoy the moments I have and to really enjoy those opportunities I did get during my reign. Thank you, and thank you for congratulating me, by the way.
Thank you, Abigail, any one of the princesses would like to speak next to Abigail? I know there was a lot of different things that maybe couldn't have been done over the past year because of the pandemic. But I know you guys did a lot of great things representing Sunny Side, so thank you again.
I'm First Princess Cadence Porter. I'm currently walking in the rain right now, I'm in Oleman in college. But I would just like to say thank you for everything you've done for me. It has been a great experience and I love doing it for the past two years, so thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing, council members, any notes of advice for our outgoing Sunset Court?
Can I say something really quick?
Yes, go right ahead, Mackenzie.
I would like to thank the City of Sunny Side for giving me the opportunity to represent our beautiful city these past two years. Even though it was filled with more disappointments than any other courts in the past. It made us three girls lean on each other and our parents. It was hard looking at our crowns just sitting in their cases. Because everything we expired to do got canceled. We had many tears, but in the end strengthened us and made us a closer court. Than any of the, one second. When we as a court stepped out to an event. Or the few times we got to ride our beautiful flow, we represented the city, not the board or our schools. I want to say I am how proud I was to represent the City of Sunny Side. My father defended for 27 years. Being on the court did two things. I filled one of my dreams. And in a way, I finished the job my dad started. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, you know, I see future leaders of our community here today, so I want to thank you ladies for the commitment over the past couple of years. And I know it was tough for everyone, including you, because obviously a lot of great events that would have been, you guys would have been part of got canceled or reduced in size. So I want to thank you for your continued commitment, and I know you girls one day will come in and hopefully be in council and represent the next court that comes in to represent our city. So thank you for all your hard work, and council members, you want to take a minute to congratulate this outgoing court?
Mr. Mayor, this is Charlie Hart, yes. I would just like to congratulate the girls for a fantastic job under, they showed a lot of poise, a lot of confidence. And they never let anybody know that it was a difficult year for them or two years. And that's a lot of, that's leadership right there, girls. Keep keeping your confidence, keeping your poise during a situation that's less than perfect. And you did an outstanding job, so we're very proud of you, so thank you very much. And have a wonderful year at college, have a great year, goodbye.
Okay, all right, ladies, thank you very much for your time, we'll move on to our 2020 Miss Sunny Side Court. The incoming court, is there anyone who would like to speak us to their projects and what are you ladies looking forward to? I know I have a couple of individuals here from our Sunset Court, if one would like to speak, I would love to hear from you ladies.
Hi, I want to say I'm Alex Zyski and I'm the upcoming, or I am now the Miss Sunny Side. And I know as four girls, we're really excited to be able to start our projects. And what I'm hoping to do is be able to host a couple of dances for our senior citizens this year. I don't know how COVID's gonna let us, but I know that's what we want to do, but I know we're so excited to be able to represent.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to all those great things. And I know this will be a lot of fun times you're gonna have representing Sunny Side, and I want to congratulate you and your guys' win. And look forward to seeing you guys in person one of these days and representing Sunny Side all over the state. Is there anyone else in your court you'd like to speak, Mackenzie, I mean Alex?
I'd like to say a few words if I, would you mind? I am the First Princess, and I'm just excited to be able to meet new people, make new connections across the community. And just be able to be present and help around whichever way I can, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say a few words too, I'm Second Princess Maura Roberts. And I think I'm just really excited to put Sunny Side on the map more so than it already is. And just get our city kind of out there and get people to know us and meet new people and stuff, I'm really excited for all of that, thank you.
And I would like to put in last words, I'm Princess Number Three, Adelina Valencia, and I'm super excited to see what this year brings us, thank you.
Thank you ladies, and just coming today and speaking in front of all of us, it obviously shows that you guys have a lot of leadership skills already and gonna develop those even further. So thank you for representing Sunny Side, looking forward to great things to come and then next year. Council members, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to congratulate the current court on winning the mayor's award at the Sun Fair this past Saturday. I saw some pictures on Facebook over the weekend and you look beautiful. And, and great, great start to your year. And I hope there's many more parades for you coming up, and I know you're gonna be doing lots of things. I might even be tempted to get out my dancing shoes and show up at one of Alex's dance demonstrations, because lord knows I need to learn how to sometime. So anyway, great, great year for you both, all three of you, four of you, all four of you, yes, thank you and congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much, Miss Sunset Court, incoming and outgoing, so I appreciate your time, please hang on if you'd like for a little longer to see how council meetings operate. And maybe one of these days when you guys come back to the community or stay in the community, you know, step in one of our shoes, so looking forward to seeing great things from both courts. Okay, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is gonna be introductions to, for Gwen, probably butchered lasting weather, for our recreation coordinator, Madam City Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor Guerrero. So tonight on Zoom, you can see we have Gwen, she in my screen is up in the corner. But she's actually been here now for a solid week, one week. She's already brought enthusiasm and she has some great ideas for bringing recreation. I'm sorry. Okay, hopefully we won't bark again. So bringing back recreation to the city, and then she is going to say a few words herself, I know she was very excited when she heard that recreation is priority. And that it was set at our last workshop, so she was, she was thinking, wow, I've already got the, got the council behind me. So with that Gwen, if you'd like to say a few words and let council know kind of where you came from and, and what your plans are.
Hi everyone, my name is Gwen Weeder. It's wonderful to see you all on Zoom tonight, and I can't wait to see you all in person when it's safe to do so. I am from Las Vegas originally, I moved up to Western Washington University to pursue my degree in Recreation Management and Leadership in 2016. I graduated in 2019, right before the pandemic started, December 2019. I have worked in three different Washington cities and in the Parks Department in Las Vegas as well. I am also a certified Parks and Recreation Professional, so I'm very excited to bring my skills to the department. And I'm so excited to kind of start building things up and getting things going, and Miss Sunny Side, I have some, we gotta make a connection here, because I would love to do some senior dances and get some help with that. So can't wait to work with you all, and I'm gonna yield my time.
Thank you Graham, great, great to have you on board, and it sounds like you're very well versed in what we need, so looking forward to all the different projects and events you're gonna put together, and looking forward to meeting you as well in person. Okay. Up next, we have our public comment section. Please note, please be advised that there may be a limit to the remarks of council for three minutes. Councilmember refer items to staff to review and our research presentation at a future council meeting. Do we have anyone in our Zoom meeting who would like to provide public comments in today's council meeting?
Yes, I would like to do an update on Sunshine Days, this is Amy Rubio.
Yes, if could just get your name and city of residence, that would be perfect, please.
This is Amy Rubio, and I live here in Sunny Side, and I just wanted to do an update for you guys on Sunshine Days. We had 17 vendors and we had about 30 floats. And we had vendors from out of town, some from Chi Cities, some from here local in Sunny Side. We had a really nice backdrop where people could take pictures from Karina. She's local here in Sunny Side, so a lot of people seemed to enjoy that there was something out for Sunshine Days. Walmart was a really big help this year, they provided all of the food for everybody attending in the parade. And they also did gift bags for everybody in the parade, we also gave the candidates a gift bag along with the courts. And each vendor that attended also got a goodie bag as well. And I'm hoping that we can grow it from here, I know we only did one day, but I'm hoping next year we're able to add more to it. And that's my update.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional public comments? Okay, here no additional public comments, Madam City Manager, do we get any email then or letters or anything from our citizens? Ms. Alba, did we get anything else from our, anything emailed in for public comments for us to discuss today?
I received no public comments.
Okay, thank you very much, one last call, anyone in our Zoom meeting who would like to do a public comment? Thank you very much. One last call. Anyone in our Zoom meeting who would like to do a public comment? Okay, here now we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be the consent agenda. So our consent agenda consists of the approval for the minutes of the August 2nd, 2021 workshop. Approval for the minutes of the August 9, 2021 regular meeting. Approve the, approve the minutes for August 23rd, 2021 regular meeting. An approval of the minutes for the August 28th, 2021 special meeting, which was our budget retreat. Payroll voucher numbers 119000 through 119008. And wire transfers is listed for $432,499.99 for the period ending on September 10th, 2021. Claim vouchers numbers 102047 through 102101, I'm sorry, 2100. And wire transfers is listed for $537,088.24 for the period ending on September 15th, 2021. Approved claim vouchers numbers 102101 through 102133. And wire transfers is listed for $757,215.85 for the period ending on September 22nd, 2021. Is there anyone wishing to pull an item or have questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. It's Counselor Farmer. Approve on the minutes of August 9th, there is a misspelling of Councilman Beeler's name on item E. I think we need to change that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm confused. Are we pulling the item?
I think they're just making a correction for us to have it corrected. Counselor Farmer, are you not pulling and usually making us?
No, I just, we just need to make the correction is all.
Just making sure. Is there anyone else wanting to make any questions or pull an item if needed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
With the correction.
Corrections that Mr. Farmer made.
A second.
Was that Counselor Hart?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, motion by Counselor Aristucci, second by Counselor Hart to approve the consent agenda as presented with the correction from Counselor Farmer. Is there any debate on this item? You know, debate, we'll have our deputy city clerk do a roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma is not here. Counselor Aristucci?
Aye.
Counselor Beeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks is also not here.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, okay, perfect. And, okay, so that was a yes for this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, you have six yeses and zero no's.
Thank you. Motion passes. And I got a note here to myself still, so a little bit later in the meeting before we adjourn to either excuse Counselor Borman in case he joins us. I don't recall him requesting excuses absence in advance. Does anyone, council members recall if he did? I don't recall either. He might just be busy. Okay, so because the agenda passes, thank you, council. Up next, we have our active agenda, which our first item is going to be US Cellular Small Cell 5G Franchise Agreement. This is going to be public hearing number two. Receive public comment on the US Cellular Small Cell 5G Franchise Agreement, public hearing number two. So this, we'll do the public, we'll open the public hearing in a second. This second public hearing is being continued from September 13th, 2021 to receive public comment on the US Cellular Small Cell 5G Franchise Agreement. I'm going to do the appearance of fairness disclosure, which the concern is that this hearing be fair, informative substance, as well as appearance. Council members, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, at this time, it will like, we would ask the audience if there are any objections to my participation or any other council members' participation in this, in these proceedings. You know, objections, this public hearing is now open at 6:58.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burisma is going to join us here shortly.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Madam City Manager, you give us information on this US Cellular Small 5G Franchise Agreement?
And actually, I will defer to Shane Fisher, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, yes, this is, we obviously briefed you guys on this a couple of weeks ago. I was not present for the meeting. I'll go ahead and, and give you another briefing. So basically, US Cellular wishes to enter into a franchise agreement with the city of Sunnyside to construct a 5G cell network. So they submitted a draft franchise agreement to the city. We reviewed, made comment, went back and forth a little bit. It took us a little while to kind of get this developed because we had, this is new technology, new franchise. Obviously, our legal team took a look at it. They back forth had some comments between US Cellular and, and the legal team. But they, they found it, we obviously agreed to move forward with it. So really, right now, we're just looking for council to, to make a motion to approve the franchise and allow US Cellular to construct the necessary infrastructure for future 5G cellular service.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Madam City Manager, do we get any public comments submitted?
City Clerk Grantoriad, we had no comments. Is that correct? Okay, so we had no public comments received via email or by mail?
Thank you. Is there anyone in our Zoom, is there anyone in a Zoom meeting today who would like to comment on this public hearing? Okay, council members, questions on this franchise agreement? Then we'll start down our list with Counselor Aristucci.
No questions, Mr. Mayor. Maybe a quick comment, and that is that I appreciate staff's work on this. You know, this is, this is what we need to do in order to, to move forward with 5G in our city. So I'm glad to see that we're, we're taking this next step. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler?
I think we got everything with the last meeting that I needed to know.
Counselor Hicks?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hart?
No questions.
Okay, here no questions from our council. Yes, sir, you're able to join us?
I apologize profusely, Mr. Mayor. I got set back by the rain and I only just now got home. So please accept my apologies.
Well, glad you got home safe and you were able to join us. Thank you very much. Any questions on this 5G franchise agreement?
I have no question, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, at that point, we have nothing else to discuss on this item. So the public hearing is now closed at 7:01 PM. Okay, our next item is going to be US Cellular Small Cell 5G Franchise Agreement. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to sign a franchise agreement between the city of Sunnyside and US Cellular to construct the necessary infrastructure for future 5G cellular service. Madam City Manager, any additional disclosures on this item?
No additional disclosures.
Thank you very much. Council members, what is your desire on this item?
Move to approve. Counselor Beeler?
Second, Counselor Aristucci.
A motion by Counselor Beeler, second by Counselor Aristucci to authorize the interim city manager to sign a franchise agreement between the city of Sunnyside and US Cellular to construct the necessary infrastructure for future 5G cellular service. Is there any debate on this item? You know, debate, can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Aristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Beeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no.
A motion passes. Thank you, council. Our next agenda item is going to consist of memorandum of understanding IAAF Local 3542. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to sign memorandum of understanding with IAAF Local 3542 setting forth a mandated vaccination requirement set forth by Governor Jay Inslee and setting the terms of compensation. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. So this is an item that was not approved at the last city council meeting, mostly due to the word mandate and then requirements within that IOU. So all references to the word mandate have been removed from the, from the MOU. And I have sat down with the president of the union, and he is in agreement with this. The previous contract was ratified by the union, so I don't think we would have any problems with that.
Okay, council members, we're done on the list. If you have any questions, then we'll start with Deputy Mayor Burisma.
I have no question on this, sir. I, I feel a lot better about the changes that have been made. Thank you.
Counselor Aristucci?
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hicks?
No questions, one comment. I still think it's sad that we're firing people that won't take a shot, but I would.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hart?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. So what is desire council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with the IAAF Local 3542 setting forth the mandated vaccination requirement set by Governor Jay Inslee and setting the terms of compensation.
Do I have a second?
This is Counselor Aristucci. I'll second.
Thank you. I'm getting some feedback. Jackie, is there a way you can mute some of our microphones so that we don't get so much of the feedback? Not quite sure who it is, but when you talk, it's a bit of a, was it just me?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like it's everyone.
Oh, it's everyone? Okay. All right, so we're just.
It's just we have, I think, our audio connected by internet versus phone. So Janice being the host would have to disconnect, but I don't think that's a good idea.
You sound crystal clear, so it's just, okay, we'll power through this, we'll be fine. It's not so, so much, I just thought maybe it was someone's feedback from their phone and their computer possibly. But, okay, motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Aristucci to authorize the interim city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with IAAF Local 3542 setting forth a mandated vaccination requirement set forth by Governor Jay Inslee and setting the terms of compensation. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, here no debate. We'll get a roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Aristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Beeler?
No.
Counselor Hicks?
No.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, you have five yes and two no.
Thank you. And that motion passes. Up next, we have our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee funding recommendations. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Sunset Rotary Club, A&amp;A Promotions, and Yakima Valley Tourism for the amounts recommended by LTAC and Lodging Tax Funds and provide direction on funding the Miss Sunset community float. Madam City Manager?
And I will defer this to Clerk Grantoriad. She is the staff liaison on this.
Okay, so we sent out a request for proposals for lodging tax funds and was available and published on our website, August 11th through September 1st. The deadline to submit the proposals was on September 1st. And LTAC received seven proposals for the, for lodging tax funds. LTAC met on September 7th to review the proposals and met again on September 22nd to provide their funding recommendations for council consideration, which is what you have in front of you tonight. At this time, LTAC recommends funding five proposals, three of which are the Sunnyside signature events at the amounts listed in the attached proposal. And they denied one proposal, which was the Miss Sunnyside pageant. The current budget for 2022 is set at $100,000, but the committee wanted to stay around $96,000, which is what we estimate we are getting for 2021 in lodging tax funds. LTAC is also requesting direction from council regarding funding the Miss Sunnyside community float proposal. And they're scheduled to meet again on Wednesday to receive your recommend, your, your direction and to review that proposal. So tonight, we're just asking for authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Sunnyside Rotary Club, A&amp;A Promotions, Yakima Valley Tourism, again, for the amounts listed there on your, on this proposal sheet. And Deputy Mayor Burisma will be able to offer more of an insight of what happened in the meeting if you have any questions. And also if you have questions about the direction they're requesting.
Thank you, City Clerk. Deputy Mayor Burisma, do you want to give a brief statement? Or you'd rather just answer questions when we go down our list of council members?
Well, I'd like to make a brief statement and then I'll take whatever questions you've got. As you can see by your screen, there's a couple of things that we have questions about. One, one, we decided not to fund this year. And it's not because we had anything particular in opposition to the event. It is simply because we didn't have the funds to move any further. And we'd already reached our, our goal or our level of commitment there. So we said, okay, this one, I guess, isn't going to get anything. And we want direction on the community float. We know that council feels or has felt strongly about this in the past. And we, and as council, and I myself, would like to see this get funded. But at the same time, we've reached our budget cap. And so that makes it a little bit difficult. As you look at these, you'll see none of them have been proposed at the amount, at the priority one amount that they've asked for. In fact, a couple of them have been cut back considerably. But we tried to do our best to be responsible with these funds. We spent a lot of time, and I really want to commend our committee for going through these carefully. They were carefully going through some of these line item by line item to, to try to make the best decision that they could. I know that our tourism marketing project, they, they had asked for up to $84,000. And line item by line item, we went through and said, this is, this is what we can do for you. And it wasn't what was left at the end. We actually tackled that one first. So if we could get some guidance on the float and answer any questions that you guys might have on the other events, I would certainly be happy to do that.
Thank you for that report, Deputy Mayor. And we'll start with Counselor Beeler. Questions or comments on this item?
I'm just wondering, because everything is so loaded with COVID, if we take some of the 25 proposals for the event center that we're planning on, but that's kind of a tough one because if we start stealing from it, we won't stop. So I'm at a lot. So I'm at a loss what to do myself. Hopefully, some other council members have good plans on this, but I'm just like the lodging tax funds, the committee, don't know what to do.
We found ourselves in the same position, Councilor Beeler.
Okay, that's all I've got to say. I hope we can all pull our heads together and figure something out.
Counselor Hicks, questions or comments?
Kind of the same both. The only thing I could see trimming a little bit of fat off of is maybe the marketing project. Just some chump change to get the float going. That is our flagship to go to other towns.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Farmer.
Yeah, I think the community float should be placed up on the top of funding. I would really like to see the total proposal, that the tourism marketing came forth. I think we've been maybe underserved from what I have seen with what they're doing for us. I'm not a big fan of it, and I would say maybe we could trim the event center a little bit. Times are tough, and I think that that could be trimmed a little bit.
Thank you, sir. If I can answer that, in order, as I understand it, in order for us to trim that, we would need the approval of council before we could touch that. That's something that we have set up to be, it's either going to be twenty-five thousand or twenty-five percent of what we have, whichever is greater. And so, and since we have about a hundred thousand this year, twenty-five thousand is exactly what it will be either way. So we would have to, we'd have to go through council in order to make that change, but we're willing to do that.
Okay, Counselor Hart.
I would be totally against for the very reason that someone earlier mentioned about taking any money from the event center. If we start stealing from that, we will never get to the point where we're able to do what we need to do with that, and that will be a huge boon to the community as a TAC, as a LTAC, as a tourism attraction, and economic development attraction. So I would really hate for us to touch that money at all. However, I do kind of tend to agree with someone who mentioned perhaps maybe there is or anything at all we can trim from the marketing project. Now, most of that money that they use to market the Yakima, Sunny Side as part of the Yakima Valley is not here. It's out in the rest of the Pacific Northwest and wherever people find out things. But nonetheless, is there anything there, Mr. Borzma, that we could perhaps take enough to at least give the float at least a three thousand? Is there any possibility of that?
Thank you, Counselor Hart. Yeah, as you can see, their initial request was eighty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars with a priority two of seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We whittled that down to nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, which is considerably less than what they were initially asking for. We can possibly, and again, this is up to council. We work at their discretion. I am one member of council. I can't make that decision at an LTAC meeting. And so if you want to see us change some numbers, please give us your recommendations, and we will meet on Wednesday morning, and we'll sure be happy to try to make some things work. We did cut some things out, obviously, already, and, you know, we were, I felt we were a little bit brutal already on some of our cutting. And I do feel, I felt kind of bad for the representative from the Sunnyside Tourism Marketing Project, Yakima County Tourism, who was there, because we gave her quite a challenge to provide as much service as she could for this amount of money. But, yeah, if council recommends that we dig deeper in that, then we will certainly make the attempt.
Counselor Restucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, having chaired that committee, Mr. Borzma, I know the predicament that you're in, and it's not a good one. I think you did a good job with what you had to work with. Counsel, I'd also remind council that there's nothing to stop us from funding the float with general fund money, if that's what council so chooses to do. I mean, it's nice to use the LTAC funds when we can, but I think it's really important that we look at that float as a billboard for our city and that the ladies that sit on that float is ambassadors to our community. And so I think it needs to be funded. I agree. Excuse me, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Farmer. That needs to move to the top of the list and would make that motion if council wants me to.
So I really, I agree with Counselor Hart. I really don't think we should be starting to take money from other already events or other areas that we already proposed a long time ago, three years ago from what I was reading. So it's something that I really commend Deputy Mayor Borzma and the committee for sitting down. I'd see there was a three to none vote on most of these items, which is obviously there was some consensus on what to do and what was able to be done based on the budget amount. And yes, things were tough and still going to be tough for travel and tourism and hotel stays. And I'm not surprised that the revenue part of the LTAC is a little low. And again, we all have to live within our means, and I think that's just the same situation with our city, that we are just a little bit on the lower end of revenue for that lodging tax fund. With that being said, Deputy Mayor Borzma, was there any discussion of Cinco de Mayo Festival with the down payment that was given to some of the major groups from last year? If they were going to be able to give us credit this year so they could appear at our events for Cinco de Mayo?
Mr. Mayor, as I recall, we talked about that earlier this year a little bit. It did not come into the discussion this time around as we were looking for proposals for the, this is for next year. And so there is a slight possibility, I know that for 2020, they did show a little bit of mercy on some of those things. So I'm not sure the position that she's at, and she may not know yet either, so it may be a little bit early for her to say. I do want to also add that the Miss Sunnyside Pageant, a lot of what the money would go to would be for advertising, and that advertising would be now taken care of through the Sunshine Days and Parade Funding Proposal, because she will be advertising that event already. And so she has already agreed to say that she will do the advertising for the Miss Sunnyside Pageant through the Sunshine, I can get it out, yeah, Sunshine Days and the parade. She'll do that all at the same time. So advertising funds that they would normally use for the pageant are going to be already being used through A&amp;A Productions to get that information out.
And one last question. I know in the past, I know we have a couple of questions from our staff, but one last question. In the past, we did quite a bit less contribution to the Sunset Float, and then the actual group of parents, they kind of did some fundraising and put some, I'm sure, lots of sweat equity into it. Was that taken into consideration as well from the way it was built in the past to nowadays? Fun quite a bit of it?
Yes, we did, Mr. Mayor. There was a lot of discussion about sponsorships, and obviously, no matter how much we give to the float, there's going to be a lot of sweat equity involved through the parents and extended family and the girls themselves. And so that was discussed, and, you know, as you look at the budgets, if you've had a chance to look over all of those, you know that what they're asking from LTAC is not the entire amount, and it shouldn't be. LTAC should be something that helps them along their way. There's certain things that we are allowed to fund and certain things that we should not be funding, and so we tried to be mindful of that as well. I know I've seen some questions pop up on the chat that I'm sure we'll talk about here in a minute, but, you know, there's other ways besides just LTAC, as Mr. Restucci mentioned, if we choose to fund this. And again, that is up to council, and we're certainly more than happy to work with whatever council's guidance is on these issues.
Okay, we'll go to staff. They both have hands. I'm not sure who was first, City Clerk Correnteria or City Manager, but I will start with City Clerk Correnteria. Go ahead and give us your comments.
I do want to let you know that in 2021, city council approved funding them for two thousand dollars. What we can do is Elizabeth Jamie and I sat down and we set the budget at a hundred thousand. I don't think that they would have a problem setting that up another, bumping it up to another two thousand, three thousand, because there is money in the actual budget. This is just what we're setting it at for 2022. So we just talked about it, and I'm sure it's something we can still edit, because you guys haven't approved the budget anyways.
Madam City Manager.
And that is exactly what I was going to say. I just ran a report in Springbrook, and we have a hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars in excess fund balance in the LTAC fund. So bumping that up by five thousand dollars would not hurt that fund at all, and that hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars is outside of the money set aside for the convention center. So that is totally separate from that, and we wouldn't be taking it from that line item. We would be taking it from the fund balance. I don't think it would be inappropriate for us to also, as Jameson said, look into the ARPA money, since this is replacing something that was kind of related to COVID, and we'll do the research. But honestly, I think that the fund has it. We just bump up that budget by enough to cover the float.
And City Clerk, just a kind of a question for you. Tonight, we're asking to obviously approve the committee's funding recommendations. If we leave the community float out as an item that we can discuss down the road, can the LTAC meet and reconsider once the budget is adjusted to take that into account, so that we don't vote as a no item tonight for the community float?
Correct. As of right now, the agenda item is just to fund the ones that were recommended. So the community float is not included in that number, and LTAC is meeting on Wednesday to receive your direction. So then they can make another recommendation saying, council, we'd like to fund them at this amount, and then at your next council meeting, you can approve that or not.
Thank you. That definitely clarifies things for me. Council members, any additional questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, it looks like we just need to get rid of what's in front of us right now. Then we could have a longer discussion about the float, yes?
Absolutely. So tonight, we're going to vote on the items that got approved, and we'll leave the float item out, since it's not on the recommended funding. And then if council meets again, it sounds like our city manager has a plan in place to try to get some of those funds made available for potential discussion in LTAC and recommendation to council a little bit later.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the LTAC recommendations. Let's see here, to the city, to the, I'm sorry, I would move to approve the recommendations of the LTAC to the city council.
Counselor Beeler would second that.
Okay, motion by Counsel, motion by Counsel Restucci, second by Counsel Beeler, to enter into an agreement with Sunset Rotary Club, A&amp;A Promotions, and Yakima Valley Tourism for the amounts recommended by LTAC enlarging tax funds and provide direction from funding for the Miss Sunset Community Float, which it sounds like we already gave that direction. Is there any debate on this item? You're in a debate. We'll do roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borzma.
Yes.
Counselor Restucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven guesses and zero no.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Up next, we have modem installation service. Consider authorizing this interim city manager to select PAUD CO installations to install police vehicle modems. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. So this is, in some ways, a housekeeping item and in some ways not, but we purchased the modems, and because we have many makes and models of police vehicles and many different years, our IT department is not qualified to install them. So this is who was recommended. They do a lot of vehicles for the sheriff's department, and so we would like to have permission to hire them and have them install the modems for us.
Thank you, and was any additional comments, City Manager? Okay, thank you. So we'll start with questions and comments from Counselor Hicks.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer.
No questions.
Counselor Hart.
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Borzma.
I have no questions, sir.
Counselor Restucci.
No questions, sir.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes, I'm just a little disheartened. This is for the exact question I asked when we bought the modems, that we were capable of doing it, so I don't know what happened that makes us not capable of doing it. But I trust the city manager knows what she's doing, so I understand things happen. So I think we're going to have to go ahead and do this to get those cards up to date with the new modems we purchased. Thank you.
Okay, and I have no questions on this item, on this item, so what is desire council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to select PAUD CO installations to install police vehicle modems.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Deputy Mayor Borzma, second by Counselor Hart, to select PAUD CO installations to install police vehicle modems. Is there any debate on this item? You're in a debate. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borzma.
Yes.
Counselor Restucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven guesses and zero no.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Up next, we have an executive session for fifteen minutes. RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one forty, parentheses four, parentheses B, that portion of the meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievances, or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiation or proceedings while in progress, and no action is expected. I will now ask the deputy city clerk to place our guests in the virtual waiting room, and we'll start along the, Madam Deputy City Manager, City Clerk, do you need a couple of minutes or a minute so we can start at that time?
Yes, please. I'll start getting everybody into the waiting room. Thank you.
Can you make me the co-host, please, Janice, so that I can share a document?
And we'll start the executive session at seven thirty, too. We'll give you a full manager, Janice, okay?
Okay, thank you.
One, Janice puts everybody in the virtual room. She'll make you the actual host, because she can't make anybody co-host. I don't know why, but she'll make you the actual host, and then you'll have to admit everybody back in on your own and make her host again at the end.
Okay. Okay.
Janice, now you'll have to stop the recording on Zoom, pause it, actually, and then...